Welcome to the Econometrics Journal's special session on heterogeneity. I'm Richard Smith and I'm Managing Editor of the Econometrics Journal. Each year, the Econometrics Journal organizes a special session at the Royal Economic Society Conference on a topic of what we, the editorial board, views as of importance for empirical researchers. This special session on heterogeneity certainly fits that desire and, of course, is particularly relevant for the analysis, well, because of the analysis of the effects of heterogeneity and subsequently, one hopes, amelioration are absolutely crucial for applied economics research. The Econometrics Journal is especially fortunate to have three leading researchers who have investigated this area, namely Yuichi Kitamura, Stephan Bonhomme, who are the main speakers, and Lars Nechheim, who will provide the discussion. So the way that the session's organized is that the speakers will have 35 to 40 minutes each, and then the discussion will be for about 10 minutes, and then there'll be an opportunity for questions from the floor after the discussion is completed. So if I can invite our first speaker, Yuichi Kitamura, to present the first talk. Thank you very much, Yuichi.
Okay, which one is yours? Do you know where it is?
Must be my name. Must be.
Is that it?
It disappeared?
No, that's blunder.
Oh, here.
Ah.
And so what time?
About 35. What do we got?
5:45.
10 minutes.
Okay. Okay. So first of all, I'd like to thank Richard and, you know, the other all of the discounts for letting me talk about in the session. And so, well, to begin with, so I will be talking about basically a mixture model, the use of mixture models in to deal with heterogeneity. And so, so maybe this is the one. Okay, great. Okay, so, well, first of all, I have to maybe apologize for two things upfront. One is, so when I was asked about this, I thought, well, maybe I'll do a savage, savage talk. And so I, but then it turns out that, so I probably focus on something I reasonably well, consequences, I'll be talking a lot about my work, so it's not quite looking like a savage paper or something, but still. So that's, that's one. And also, since it became something like that, I thought I should see at least some little new thought. And so unfortunately, I decided to do it precisely maybe 12 days ago. And so, and then I came up with this idea 10 days ago. So it doesn't, it's not really a deep result, but still there's some new stuff. So that's, that's how it goes. In any event, okay, so, so in this talk, I mainly talk about random, because I'm looking at a mixture of that, that is the way to deal with heterogeneity. But anyway, so that's the focus of my talk. Second, so I've been talking a lot about semiparametrics, both in terms of identification and estimation. So that's what I'm going to do. And when I talk about finite mixture model, typically the interesting part is the identification. So I've been doing it a lot. When it comes to a little bit more general case where the mixture is continuous, then the actually the estimation, semiparametric estimation part, so it's going to be a bit subtle and. And then, right, so, so I'll be talking about some methods which you guys can sort of use for problems. And so that's another focus of this talk. And without too much restrictions or conditions, in many cases, identification becomes a set identification. So that's another important feature of this problem, so I will be talking about that. Okay, so, but anyway, in a very generic term, mixture model or random effects model would look like this. And so what, okay, oops, sorry. What we observe is this conditional distribution of y given x, so f, in this case, it's looks like a density, but some distribution, conditional distribution of y given x. But then what we are interested in is the, especially this, I don't know, oops, sorry, this f of y given x and alpha. So here, alpha represents the unobserved heterogeneity, and g is the distribution of unobserved heterogeneity, which I might say that's a mixing distribution because it's a mixture model now. And the f of y given x, alpha, is a, what I call component distribution or component density. So that's a very generic setup. And then, so what, when we talk about semi-parametrics or non-parametrics in this class of model, there are a few issues or choices we can make about the a model specification. So for example, the question would be something like the component distribution should be treated non-parametrically, or maybe the mixing distribution, g, should be treated non-parametrically, maybe both, so stuff like that. And related to that subject, then what's the nature of the distribution of, or support of alpha is, are we happy with saying that that's a finite, finitely supported distribution? In that case, it's going to be a finite mixture, or maybe it's a continuous distribution. And especially when it's a continuous distribution, then the dimension of alpha matters a lot. There are some stuff which you can do, only alpha is one dimensional, and there are some stuff which works for a finite dimensional alpha, but then sometimes you want to deal with infinite dimensional alpha. So there are different choices or kind of requirement we can put on the dimension of alpha. So as I said before, we go after both identification and estimation, and sometimes the identification is point, and sometimes it's set. Okay. So I'm going to do finite mixture first. As I said before, in this part, non-parametric identification is more interesting, so I'm going to focus on that. So I will talk a little bit about existing results, and then, so the second part, so this, what I say, it's identification under certain exclusion restrictions. So that's the part which was invented 10 days ago. And then the second part is a general case. So basically, I'm kind of thinking about continuous case, as I said before, that dimension matters a lot in terms of heterogeneity. Okay, so finite mixture first. Okay. Now, so once again, this is still generic. So what we observe is a y, and so we observe, in this case, it's a cap, cap F is a CDF, can be density or anything, but, so let's say it's CDF. And then the CDF is given by the summation of lambda j times Fj. So in this case, this, the small j indexes, if, we are talking about heterogeneity, and then j indexes the a types, right? So in this case, we are saying that Fj, F sub j, is the, that distribution of y for type j people, right? And lambda j is, of course, that probability weight on that. But also, in this kind of model, it's sometimes interesting to think about a multiple equilibrium, which is very common in a recent literature, well, the literature itself is old, but recently very active literature of a game theoretic model estimation. And in that case, Js can be representing multiple equilibrium in that. And, and as I write here, in those kind of models, you get into lots of a set identification result. And so I will come back to this second application as well. It's not quite about heterogeneity, but nonetheless, I think it's interesting. So, okay, so I discuss four cases for this finite mixture. And so case number one is what I call it, multiple outcomes with independence restriction. So that's case number one. Case two, that's where we have covariates in the mixing distribution or the probability weight on each component distribution. Case three is the case where you have a covariate in E, the Fj is the component distribution that induces what I call shift restriction. The fourth one is the one, the kind of little new stuff. Okay. So case one, and so as far as I can tell, probably Holland-Zhu is the first one to kind of started looking at this, this model. So what is this? So this one, in Holland-Zhu Anna's paper, what they think about is, so F, the, the, sorry, the right component distribution, Fj, is, it's, it has actually a multivariate distribution. So for each, and, and it, it's almost like, a little bit like panel data. So that's why I use index small t. And so for each type, the joint distribution is given by F sub j of y1 to y cap t. And in their paper, cap t is greater than or equal to 3, and it's a two-point mixture, although the later work extends that aspect. But in any event, so that's the model. Okay. And so the important restriction here is the independence assumption. So, so each Fj is actually, it's, it's a, for each j, y1 to y cap t, all of them are independent across each other. So that's a restriction they are looking at. And so in this case, actually, without too much other restriction, you can non-parametrically identify lambdas. So lambda is a scalar, and the, the distribution FJs, which of course breaks down into FTJs. So that's their result. Just quickly, how do you do that? At least in Holland-Zhu paper, what they do is that they just keep on integrating out some of the ys to marginalize FY distribution over there, and then that would creates, that would create new set of equations. Without independence assumption, of course, it doesn't buy you anything, but combined with that independence assumption, actually, having all these, the marginalized versions of the, the, this type of equation adds more and more information, and after a while, add, keep on adding, and then you get point identification non-parametrically. So that's the insight. It's a very, actually, a very interesting insight. So Stephan has this paper. In terms of the model specification, it's very similar, but the way they identify and estimate is kind of quite different, meaning that they use much more like a Fourier analysis kind of a thing to do both identification and estimation. So that's a very nice paper. And so there's this Kasahara-Schmutz paper, which is much more like the, technically, it's very close to what Holland-Zhu did. So they do this marginalization, but applied in a kind of different class of models. That's case number one. Okay. Case number two, so this is the, the model, so with Marc Henri and Bernal-Salnier. So we looked at this class of model. So in this case, there are lots of x's, but as you can see, x's are floating out around everywhere. So in a sense, you might want to just, you know, at least mentally raise x's, although I'm just making a point that you have other covariates everywhere. The point of this model is that there's this extra covariate daveu, which only enters in the mixture weight, but it's excluded from their component distribution. Now, I'm going to come back to what kind of a restrict, the models would imply this kind of a restriction later on. But anyway, so that's the model. Without adding anything, and which is the main result in that paper, is just having this exclusion restriction gives you a lot of information about lambdas and FJs, and actually, you can get a partial ident, meaningful partial identification result. If you want to go after point identification, you kind of have to do something like this if you, well, so that's one way to deal with a point identification, which is this kind of assumption that tails. So that's what Marc and Bernal discuss in the details in their paper. So, so that's that. Case number three, so that's a paper I wrote a while back. So what is this? So this is much more like a switching regression model in a, you know, sort of quant-Goldfeld type of tradition. But, so here, Mj, the regression function, is non-parametric. And so you're going to be switching across capital J, different states or types or whatever it is. And what you want to identify is the probability weights lambdas. So there are like lambda 1 to lambda j, of course, it adds up to 1, and also a non-parametric function, Mjs, and distributions Fjs. So, so that's what you want to identify. And here, the key assumption I make is the independence assumption between x and epsilon. Once you have that, and then the model can be written in this way, because I can use common Fjs across x's, so, so that's the, the, basically the model. With that independence assumption and extra assumption that the regression function, functions have some region where they are not completely parallel, and then actually you can show that all the lambda js, Mj functions, and capital Fj functions are all non-parametrically point identified. That way it works is that I'm using the kind of what I call shift restrictions induced by the variation in x's. I don't think I have time to talk too much about this thing, but, so that's the result. And you can actually extend this result where the switching probability lambda depends non-parametrically on x. So that, in that case, it's a little bit like fixed effects model, because now I'm saying that the distribution of unobserved heterogeneity can depend on x in an unrestricted way. So that's something you can do. And also, you can have a not fully independent x's and the disturbance term. Instead, you can have a multiplicative heterogeneity of unknown form, but I don't think you can have both at the same time. Anyway, so that's the result. All right, so this is the little new stuff. Okay, so what is this? So I'm looking at, say, two-point mixture, and I use k, so here still, this one is like CDF, but there are lots of Fs, and so I decided to use different letter to denote distribution. So k is known, right? So we observe this conditional distribution of y given covariates z, w, and x. Once again, x's are floating all over, so you might want to eliminate the x's mentally. But then, so the crucial thing is the property of z that covariates z's and w's. So, but, so before going into that restriction I'm making, so the dimensions of z's and like y, w, y, and of course, x are quite arbitrary. So it can be scale, it can be vectors. So for example, you can talk about identification of joint distribution of y, that's fine. And so the goal is to identify lambdas, well, lambda, in this case, just one, and F1 function and F2 function, or F1 distribution. And, sorry, this is supposed to be F1 and F2, I'm sorry. Okay, so that's what, what we are doing. And so, so for a while, I pretend that all the variables are continuous, but it's not crucial. Actually, you can do a discrete case as well. So I'm going to come back to that point. And, but once we, I do continuous case, it's convenient to differentiate lots of stuff, so I, that's what I do. All right. So this is the, the kind of main result. So what this is saying is that, so suppose I want to figure out the a component distributions, say, F1 of y given z and x, and F2 of y given z and x. And remember that, so this model is much more like the model, the, considered in Henri, Kitamura, Salnier paper with this extra, extra covariate z sitting over there in component distributions. That's a structure. And then, so the, the result is, if I assume these two main assumptions, so what is the first assumption? First assumption is saying that the, say, component distribution number one, that derivative of that against the Z2 covariate is zero, and similarly, you know, F2 distribution doesn't react to Z1 in terms of this partial derivative. However, Z1 enters into F1, so that that partial derivative is known zero, and the second one is similar. So first one is a bit like exclusion restriction, second one is local, sorry, rank condition. And so, and that has to be holding at least one y value. It doesn't have to apply to all ys, and it might be a good thing to emphasize that, because y can be completely a discrete distribution as well. So here, ys, I don't pretend that y is discrete or continuous, it can be both. The second assumption is that this, the w changes the weighting lambda in this way. So if, at some point, w star, if I have both, and then actually F1 and F2 are non-parametrically identified for every y, and also lambda is identified for w values where this rank condition for lambda holds. Moreover, actually, this, the identification result is completely constructive, meaning that the first component distribution, you can just work out and have, for example, represented in terms of that expression over there. And the right-hand side is, of course, it's everything is known, because k is the observed conditional distribution, right? So F1, F2 is, both of them are non-parametrically identified, and also lambda can be identified as well. The expression is a bit ugly, but still, you can do that. Okay, so remark number one, what was that, the first assumption about component distributions, I call it CD? A sufficient structure would be something like this. So in F1 distribution, only Z1 appears as a covariate, and similar thing about F2. Now, if you consider a, you know, typical entry game example, and then, so, so now kind of we all know that it tends to create multiple equilibrium. And in that case, the multiple equilibrium is typically enter, don't enter, and don't enter, enter. And so if I say that the, the Z1 only enters, you know, from number one's payoff and similar thing about Z2, and then, of course, this condition would be fulfilled. Actually, this is not, I'm not the first one to assume something like this. For example, the Bayari-Hong and Ryan paper talks about identification in a kind of game theoretic model, and actually, they verify, so this is quote-unquote, the necessary order condition for local identification in a, in a discrete games with complete information. But also, even the Tamer's, you know, the restart paper appeared a while back, also uses this kind of restriction, although in that paper, the identification is based on identification at infinity, whereas this result is definitely not identification at infinity. Okay. So exclusion restriction for w. Again, if we think about a game theoretic model with multiple equilibrium, obviously, so this is kind of restatement of what I'm imposing, which is that, so the lambda function is the equilibrium selection mechanism. And so we want something that only affects equilibrium selection mechanism, but that doesn't enter the outcomes within or conditional on a particular equilibrium. This kind of thing can be defended by, say, that there's a, like fixed cost, and that wouldn't affect conditional on an equilibrium, maybe pricing can be done depend, in that case, that fixed cost thing might disappear from the, the y distribution within the equilibrium. So I'm, so I'm just referring to, we have many more examples of this exclusion restriction. So I, I'm just mentioning that paper. Okay, number three, so discrete case. So in this case, actually, it's, the whole thing pretty much remains variant. So I'm going to use this notation, delta x dash to n x, so it's just the difference between the function evaluated at two values. I should probably say that this is partial differencing, meaning that maybe there are some other variables in F, and that doesn't change under this operation. So, because this is a discrete version of a partial derivative. And then pretty much the same thing happened, meaning that, so all these similar conditions, the way I write it here might be a bit misreading. So I definitely need partial differencing operation. So I need to be able to move Z1, Z2, and say, w freely between two, at least two points. So at least I need like two to three points in terms of the, the joint distribution of, say, Z1, Z2, and w. So that's, that's what I'm talking about here. But with similar assumptions, once again, F1 component distribution and F2 component distribution, these things are identified for every y, and lambda is also identified. Okay. And once again, the identification is constructive, and so you can come up with this formula, which might be actually a good thing, because in the previous formula, I had something like second derivative, conditional expectation taken second derivative, which is very difficult to estimate in practice, right? So, and so probably you don't want to do that in practice, but in this version, it's a finite difference. So still, you have to do So still, you have to do the nonparametric regression in terms of z, w, and x, but you don't have to do a derivative, which is an extra difficulty. So so that's the discontinuous case. I'm gonna skip that point, I think. And also, if you only have this exclusion restriction in terms of z1 and z2 only for, say, one of the form, and then, still, you can do a bit of nonparametric identification. So for example, if there's no exclusion restriction on F2, still, F1 would be nonparametrically identified. Okay. All right, so to prove that I have a proof, this is a proof, and actually, it's quite straightforward. You just kind of keep on, this is a continuous case, so you just keep on differentiating with respect to w, z1, z2, and take second derivatives. And basically, you just solve this nonlinear simultaneous equation. And that's how I come up with, say, formula like this. Okay, so so that's the finite mixture case. Okay, so five minutes. Yeah, well, in the continuous case, as I said before, the dimensionality matters a lot. So for example, so this is a dogma of result. So this is a continuous mixture in the sense that alpha, the individual characteristics, is a continuous variable. So this is, can be regarded as that kind of finite switching model I just talked about a moment ago. But in this case, the mixture is continuous. In this case, alpha is one-dimensional, because you have to use the, all the quantile tracks, for one thing. And but still, in this case, and but on the other hand, in this paper, it's much more like fixed effects in the sense that not just that the, all these things, alphas and x are correlated, and you can estimate the m-function and conditional distribution of alpha, conditional distribution of epsilon, all done nonparametrically. So that's example number one. Number two, so this is very well-known, so probably, and this is all old classic result. And so I'm not, I'm not going to talk about it in details. But so this is one example of having potentially continuous mixture and doing nonparametric identification as well as a nonparametric estimation. Okay. Example number three, so so here, I actually, I'm talking about this, the second paper, Hoda-Lang, Clamela, and Mamen paper, which is actually very nice. So this is a linear random coefficient model. So in this case, unobserved heterogeneity is multi-dimensional. Still, it's a finite dimensional, right? So beta is the finite dimensional random part, so heterogeneity. And so even though you don't see something like epsilon, but epsilon is in one of the betas, if you like, right? So so that's no, it's really a generalization of simple linear model where betas in the, I mean, that regression coefficients are also random. And in this case, it's, it would be very nice to be able to identify and estimate the joint distribution of beta totally nonparametrically. And you can, actually. And so what you can show is actually, this kind of model becomes a, in terms of this notation, this model is saying that the observed conditional density of y given x is so-called Radon transform of the something you want, f beta. So what you want to do is, of course, to invert this last equation. This is the so-called ill-posed inverse problem. And so you have to be, do do it carefully. And so you have to do a regularized inverse. And that's what the, this Hoda-Lang, Clamela, Mamen paper does. And so you can do it. Similarly, if you have a binary choice model with similar random quotient structure, so that's the, this, the paper with, my paper with Eric Gotier. And so in this case, once again, you can rewrite the whole thing. So this is the random quotient binary choice, where where you want to estimate the joint distribution of beta. And so you can do that. Once again, rewriting the whole thing, the model becomes something like this. So R of x is that the conditional choice probability which you observe, and which is some sort of transform of the something you want, f beta. So you want to invert this operator h, which is once again, ill-posed inverse problem. So you have to do something. But once you do something, you can implement this thing. So this is the explicit expression formulas, which is very convenient. Using this formula, you can estimate a, say, this is a two-dimensional case. Blue is the true distribution, the colored one is the estimator. And so you can do this. If blue one has two peaks, it looks like you can estimate these things with reasonable accuracy. So you can do these things. And more recently, Lars and his co-authors consider kind of more general various structural models with a random quotient model. And they talk about identification estimation, you know, using kind of completeness conditions. And also, this Bonham paper is much more like a fixed effect, but still, you can estimate the random quotient distribution. Okay, so all typically ill-posed. So finally, it's just 20 seconds. If you don't want to assume things like finite dimensionality of unobserved heterogeneity and all other stuff about the component distribution, then you can't avoid set identification typically. So 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 there are some attempts to see what's going to happen in that case. So one thing I did with York-Stoy is considering completely general random utility model, where the u represents unobserved heterogeneity. So each person has its own random utility. So obviously, the unobserved heterogeneity is infinite dimensional. And then, you, definitely, it's going to be a set identification. But there's a nice theoretical result by McFadden and Richter about how to deal with this kind of case. So what we do is that to come up with econometrics procedure to make McFadden-Richter theory workable in, with the real data. So that's what we do. So this is a very, very heavily set identified result. Okay, so so that's, that's pretty much it. So nonparametric mix, nonparametrics in mixtures can be finite and continuous in finite cases. There are lots of interesting nonparametric identifying built-in result. Continuous case, it typically induces ill-posedness, so you have to deal with that kind of problem. Okay, so I think I stop.
Thank you very much, Yushy. Okay, so Stefan, next week. You happy to?
Okay, so, hi, I'm very happy to be here. Thanks for the invitation. I'm also very happy to come after Yushy's talk, because this is quite related to what he has been talking about. So I'm going to talk about these quantile models for panel data. And this is based on joint work with Manuel Arrellano at CEMFI. So the broad research program here is to analyze nonlinear panel data models. And we know these models are important for applied work, but they're also not really well-understood. And in this talk, I'm going to focus on two main challenges. One is the presence of unobserved heterogeneity, how to deal with fixed effects in nonlinear context, that's not obvious. The other one is the presence of dynamic interactions between outcomes and covariates. So dynamics and heterogeneity are part of the reason why we like these models, but they are also part of the reason why they are difficult to deal with. So, you know, there are many models that we understand reasonably well in cross-section, but we still don't understand in panels. We don't have natural counterparts for these models in panels. Think of simple nonlinear regression models, for example, the evdoqima of example. So or more general nonlinear regression models, they are not well-understood. Think of sample selection, think of quantile regression. All these don't have very natural counterparts so far in panels. So the avenue we want to contemplate here in this, in this research program is to use quantile regression as a flexible method to model conditional distributions. And this will have the advantage of giving us a possibility to deal with the presence of unobserved heterogeneity and the dynamic sequential conditioning problems that we can face in these relatively complex and sophisticated models. So basically, we want to do two things. One is to build a rich class of models that would be relatively flexible, that would be of a semi-parametric nature, typically based on these quantile regression specifications. The second thing we want to do is to develop practical methods for estimation and for inference. So the approach that we have in mind is pretty general. So I'm going first to present this approach, and then I'm going to to make it more specific in a special case, in a simple model, that is, the panel data counterpart of the classical concurrent-basset quantile regression model for the, for the cross-section. So doing quantile regression with panel data. So just to anticipate, so that you have in mind what is the role that quantile regression is playing in this context, there will be different layers of quantile regressions if we focus on this model, this quantile regression model for panel data, because the model of interest will be quantile regression. But then, we will use additional layers of quantile regression to model the unobserved heterogeneity and to model possible feedback effects in a dynamic model. So basically, two parts. So the general approach, that is this first part, and then the, the special case of the quantile regression model for panel data. So general approach, why is quantile regression useful to model conditional distributions in nonlinear panel data models? So here is a general representation that basically is the same that the one that Yushy was, was presenting before, with one difference is the conditioning here of the unobserved heterogeneity and covariates. So what is this? So this y here can be quite complicated. It's a sequence of outcomes, maybe outcomes on non-exogenous covariates. This x here is a, is a matrix of, you know, everything that we want to condition upon, typically exogenous regressors, but also initial conditions in dynamic setups. And eta is the unobserved heterogeneity that could be multi-valued. It could, it could be a vector. It could not be too big. It could not be infinite dimensional, for example, as Yushy was, was mentioning before. So you see this, this kind of mixture structure. And basically, the first challenge I was talking about in heterogeneity is the presence of this distribution here of eta given x. The second one is the presence of the dynamics, possibly complex dynamic patterns between outcomes and covariates. So I'm going to, in two slides, mention these two difficulties in more detail, or the two features of panel data model in some more details. So the first challenge is to deal with the presence of unobserved heterogeneity. And there is a dimensionality issue here, because in a panel data context, we want to let unobserved heterogeneity and covariates to be correlated. That's very important, actually, in cross-section often, independence between eta and x is an identifying assumption. In panel, we have the opportunity to allow for some correlation, actually, very flexible correlation. What is the price to pay? That this eta here is assumed to be constant over time. That's, of course, a big assumption. But assuming this, then we know from linear panel data models that is useful to allow for correlation between eta and x. In order to take into account, for example, timing variance sources of heterogeneity, using fixed effects in a standard regression, or in, in dynamic models, we want to allow the initial conditions of the process to be correlated with unobserved heterogeneity. Actually, it is, you know, the reasonable assumptions by construction almost. So in linear models, we know how to deal with the presence of unobserved heterogeneity that is correlated with x, just differentiate out. In nonlinear models, however, differencing does not work in general. Moreover, in nonlinear models, sometimes, the distribution of eta given x is also of interest. We might be interested in average effects that involve the joint distribution of heterogeneity in the population, that would typically here be observed heterogeneity x plus the unobserved heterogeneity eta. So that can be also part of the object of interest, what we want to recover. So the first challenge is to find a method that allows us to flexibly model the distribution of eta given x in this, in this context. The second feature or challenge of the model is the presence of dynamics. So to, to fix ideas, I want to get, to set up the notation. So y is a sequence of outcomes over time. And this yit here is the same sequence, but until period small t. So where, when, when covariates, sorry, are exogenous, strictly exogenous, then it's rather easy to specify your model, just specify your model of current outcomes, given lagged outcomes, and all the sequence of covariates. Plus, eventually, you put also the unobserved heterogeneity. However, in panel data, often, we are also interested in how covariates respond dynamically to past values of the outcomes. So generally, when covariates are not exogenous, we get a more complicated expression for the likelihood that involves complicated and rich interactions. So we have the fact that current outcomes depend on past outcomes, and current and past covariates. But we also have this extra term here, that is, our current covariates respond to realizations of the lagged outcomes, the lagged covariates, and the unobserved heterogeneity. This is often referred to as the feedback process in these dynamic models. To give you an example, you could think of a production function. Here, we are allowing that the choice of input in a period may be affected to bad or good shocks to productions in, in, in previous periods. So this is an extra term that we have to deal with. Remember, the first challenge was to deal with a method that allows us to flexibly model how eta depends in this context on initial conditions. We need also here to find a method that allows us to flexibly model how past outcomes can affect future covariates. So to do this, to have this, we use a flexible method for distribution, and we use quantile regression. That's basically the, what we do. So that's a one slide that is not about panel, that's about quantile regression. So that's a one-slide summary. So what is quantile regression? Well, you know, for a given percentile level, let's say tau is equal to 0.5, we specify the conditional quantile on y given x as a linear function of x. So basically, we will have, if we do that, specify this for all value of tau, we will get a model that depends on a continuum of parameters. So each tau will be associated to a parameter vector, beta tau. And this is quite a flexible model, because it has a lot of parameters, and that gives us quite a lot of flexibility. I will try to provide some more motivation in the next slide, talking about panels specifically. But suppose we have this model that holds for each value of tau. Then there is an alternative representation that is quite insightful and useful for what I'm going to talk about. That is, the fact that we could write down the following. Y is x prime beta of u, where u is an error term. U is uniform and is independent of x. And this x beta of u here, so you see the error term affects, that's different from a standard linear model. Linear model would be y is x prime beta plus u, for example, or a function of u. Here, the difference is that the u affects not only the intercept, but also each of the coefficients of x. And this gives you really additional flexibility in the model. Now, the other nice fixture that makes this quantile regression interesting for, for applied work is computational tractability. We can construct a consistent estimator of beta tau just by minimizing a well-behaved convex function, so-called average check function here. So how can we use this idea of quantiles to deal with these two problems or two features of panel data models, heterogeneity and dynamics? Let me give you an example for the heterogeneity. So we need to find a method to flexibly model the distribution of how eta depends on x, the conditional distribution of eta given x. This x can be quite high-dimensional in applications. That will include typically sequences of strictly exogenous regressors plus initial conditions in dynamic models. That can be, that can be quite a lot of regressors. We propose We propose to use a quantum regression model as a model of the distribution of eta given x. I mean, the key, maybe I didn't emphasize that enough previously, is that the reason that we can write this equation is because there is a one-to-one mapping between conditional quantiles and conditional distribution function. Okay, so if I specify the conditional quantile function, I specify equally the conditional distribution function. Particular, I have an implied likelihood, semi-parametric likelihood, when I'm assuming a quantile model. That will be pretty key implementation of this approach, actually. So this is a model for an observed heterogeneity. Now, we argue this is, of course, this is correlated random effects. This is not without loss of generality in general. That imposes restrictions on how eta depends on x, but it is rather flexible. Of course, this is more flexible than a common alternative that is Gaussian correlated random effects. This is more flexible because here mu can depend on the unobserved heterogeneity, can depend on the quantile value. Moreover, something that I think is worth noting is that in the absence of covariates, or maybe more interestingly, suppose you have discrete and saturated covariates, like gender, or gender interacted with race with four categories, then you get a fully non-parametric modeling with this quantile model. There is no obvious restriction. Of course, when x is continuous, you do have lots of restrictions in this model. But then there are alternatives that people are currently developing to make this quantile model more flexible by introducing, for example, functions and interactions of regressors as extra regressors in this quantum regression model. You know, eventually, you know, as the sample size increase, you include more interactions and powers, and eventually, you are fully flexible in the limit. So extensions. So of course, I mean, this model here, the big difference with the standard quantum regressions is that we don't observe eta. So we need a method that allows us to estimate these quantile parameters delta of tau for each tau in the absence of observations on eta. And that would be what I'm going to present in the special case very soon. So just before I present this, in the special case of a specific model, just give you two extensions. One extension is, of course, eta i here is scalar. It was quite easy. When eta is not scalar, you know, multivariate quantum regression is a hard problem. So what we propose to do is to use triangular structure here. Triangular quantiles, that is, eta 1 given x specified as a quantile that specifies a marginal distribution. And we specify the conditional distribution of eta given eta 1, eta 2 given eta 1, by specifying the conditional quantile in this way. And like before, this specification could be augmented by putting other interactions of eta 1 with x, et cetera, et cetera. So that's one extension. We think that these triangular models are very convenient and rather flexible for implementation. So from an applied perspective, we think they have a lot of value. Now, let me go back to the second challenge I was mentioning at the beginning, the presence of dynamics. What if we have feedback effects? That is, past outcomes influence current regressors. We need to model this distribution. What we propose to do is to use an extra layer, an additional layer of quantum regression, another quantum regression that says that x t depends on past outcomes, past regressors, and the unobserved heterogeneity in the quantile way. So we'll have extra quantile parameters. For example, we will need also to estimate mu 1, 2 of tau for each tau. If we have several regressors, then we use a triangular structure as before because this x i 2, i t 2 depends on x, i t 1, the counterpoint on this one, you know, in triangular way. And again, we could include additional interactions and functions of these regressors to achieve more flexibility. Again, we think triangularity here is quite attractive from an implementation point of view. Of course, we still don't observe eta i, so we still cannot estimate this by simple quantum regression. So how do we deal with, you know, how do we build an estimator for this problem? So let me focus on a specific model. As I said, it's the panel data counterpart of the classical quantum regression model. So we call that random effects quantum regression. So this is the model. So y depends on, so we modeled basically the conditional quantile of y given x on eta, period by period, as x prime beta tau plus eta gamma tau. We make a number of assumptions here that are quite restrictive. And I'm not sure, and I don't think I will have time to mention all the extensions that can be done here to relax this assumption. But for example, I'm going for this talk to assume that x i's are strictly exogenous. I'm going to assume also that the u's here will be uniformly distributed, but this is not, you know, there is no essential restriction here. What is rather restrictive, on the contrary, is that we are going to assume that the u's are independent over time. I think Yushy provided a good intuition for that before by quoting this paper by Holland Zoo and this literature on identifying mixture models with repeated observations. I mean, we know from standard panel data covariance structures that there is an essential trade-off between presence of an observed heterogeneity and dynamics in the error terms. The same trade-offs, you can see them also in this relatively rich nonlinear context. So some restrictions have to be made on how the u's evolve over time and their dynamic process. And here, I'm taking this stand that is quite extreme. I'm assuming I I D errors. So this is a model. Next slide will argue that this is a nice model. But we still need to do something because it's not a well-specified model. Eta i, we don't know what it is. So we are going to complement this by postulating another model here for eta given x. And this is another quantile. So we will have basically a quantile-quantile model. And that's really the way we see the problem. So we have two layers of quantiles here. This is the model of interest, let's say. Our outcome depends on x and eta. And then we complement that with this rather flexible specification of how eta depends on x. So why do we think this is a natural model? Well, because we are understanding eta i here as time invariant missing data. Suppose eta is ability. I don't have data on ability. But suppose I could have a data on ability. That would be a very natural regression to run, to regress y i t on x i t and eta i using quantum regression. So basically, this is a model where we have both selection on observables and on un-observables. We could think of constructing counterfactual or marginal effects that have to do with, that involve the distribution of this unobservable, this additional regressor in the model, eta i. There is a big challenge here that I'm not talking about in this presentation, unfortunately. This is maybe the third challenge or the first one in this model, that is identification. So identification, as Yushy was mentioning, is challenging to prove in these models. And however, the fact that we are working with models with continuous outcomes and we have conditional independence restrictions over time provides us with opportunities for point identification. To make that intuition more explicit, what we do in the paper is that we rely on a paper by Juan Chenak and make an explicit connection with that paper in the panel data context. And show that in, under their assumptions, the quantile model is actually, or a non-parametric version of that quantile model is actually point identified. Now, a big, of course, difficulty with applying these results is that they depend on high-level assumptions, such as this completeness assumption that might be very difficult to verify, for example, in this specific model. Actually, in some even more specialized versions of this model, some recent papers have provided sufficient conditions for completeness. But in this general model, I'm not aware of a paper that could provide sufficient condition for completeness, and we haven't. So this is something that seems to be challenging, but that's a literature that is quite active. So, you know, but essentially, so in this talk, I'm assuming that identification holds, which is of course a big assumption. A bit of related literature. So on quantile regression in panel data, there is this paper by Roger Kunka in 2004 and the subsequent literature. What we do is quite related to some papers by Peter Arcidiacono and co-authors. It's also related to a very nice paper in Jasa that I don't believe is very well-known. It's a paper by Ying Wei and Ray Carroll, and a paper that deals with quantum regression with measurement error. We really use one of their insights heavily in the construction, practical construction of our estimator. Although our setup is more complex than theirs because we have to deal with an observed heterogeneity. I mean, that's a big difference with their setup, of course. So what is the main technical idea to construct an estimator here? Well, to set the notation. So remember, we have, that was the model, just to, so this is the model of interest. This is equation one and equation two, if you wish. Okay? So what can we do? Well, we can take equation one. What are the regressors in that equation? Well, the observed regressors on eta. I don't observe eta, but I call this w of eta. Okay? Then this theta will contain the parameters of the outcome equation. And this psi tau is tau minus the indicator. So this equation here, it's a nice equation that what it tells you is basically that if you could run, so think of the following. If you could run a quantum regression of y on x on eta, then the first order condition in the minimization process in the quantum regression estimation would be exactly that equation. Why is this? This psi tau is simply tau minus the indicator that y is smaller than this value. This value here is by definition the conditional quantile of y given x and eta. So this expectation is equal to zero because the probability that y is smaller than the conditional quantile given x and eta is equal to tau by definition. Okay? And this is the first order condition of a quantum regression problem. Of course, that quantum regression problem is infeasible because we don't observe eta. So the way we deal with this is first by rewriting this equation in a slightly different form. We use the law of iterated expectation and rewrite this expectation as the expectation of these infeasible moments here given y and x. That is basically the expectation of an integral that has to do with the distribution of eta given the data, given y i and x i. This is simply an application of the law of iterated expectation. This object here is the posterior distribution of eta given y and x. Of course, if we think about it, this posterior distribution depends on the parameters that we want to estimate because it depends on the likelihood function of y given x and eta and the distribution of eta given x. And we want to estimate these quantile parameters. So there is a kind of a circular problem here. But still, we have a moment function and we have a moment restriction here that we might wish to put to the data. It's exactly what we do. Actually, this is not sufficient to estimate all the parameters. We need to augment this by using, remember the equation that links eta to x. We need to have the corresponding moments also. Again, they depend on this unknown posterior distribution. So posterior distribution is unknown. It depends on the parameters to be estimated. Moreover, it's worse than that. Because what are the parameters to be estimated? Well, the parameters of the likelihood function and the parameters of the distribution of eta given x. By the way, the fact that the likelihood function depends on beta and gamma comes from the fact that we have the one-to-one mapping between distribution functions and quantiles. Okay? That's where it's really important. If I know all the quantile parameters, I can reconstruct the likelihood. But the problem, of course, is that the number of quantile parameters in the classical quantum regression model, it's a continuum of parameters. I have a full, a whole process. Keeping track of this process in an estimation algorithm is not feasible. So this is where we use, to make a feasible algorithm out of this idea, we use an insight by Wayan Carroll in their nice paper. And what we do is that we use not the, we don't build the posterior distribution using the whole parameter processes, but we approximate these quantile parameters using an approximating model. If you think about it, it's relatively easy to find a flexible parametric model that approximates this quantile parameter as well. Why is that? Because these vectors here are a bunch of univariate function from 0, 1, in 0, 1 interval to other real numbers. So what we do is that we cut the 0, 1 intervals into L different pieces, and we assume a polynomial spline on the 0, 1 interval. That is piecewise polynomial. So it's not polynomial, but it is smooth on the 0, 1 globally, but it is polynomial on each of the intervals. That's what we do effectively. So of course, if we want this approximating model still to deliver a consistent estimate of the parameters at the end, we need this approximating model to become more flexible as the sample size increase. What this means technically is that just we're going to increase the number of pieces with the sample size in the asymptotic analysis. So this is an operational trick that we use to make the method work. That is quite important. So what is the bottom line? Is that we want to reconstruct the likelihoods because we need to find this posterior distribution. So we want to reconstruct the likelihoods based on the quantile parameters. What we do is that we don't work with the continuum of the function, the non-function of the quantile parameters. We work with an approximation. That is effectively a parametric model. Actually, this parametric model gives us a parametric likelihood and a parametric posterior distribution. The parameters being the values of the quantile parameters at the endpoints of the pieces in the 0, 1 intervals, tau 1, tau 2, tau 3, et cetera. And what we use is, you know, interpolating splines for our model, basically for our approximating model. So the nice thing with this is that we get an explicit expression that I didn't write here. But for example, with a piecewise linear splines, it's very simple to write. You get an explicit expression for the posterior distribution. Now, I can finally go and write down an estimation algorithm. What is the main idea? Well, we will proceed in two steps. The first thing, maybe I want to go back to this here. Remember, we had this equation here. And this equation was a moment that depended on this unknown posterior distribution. If you, here, you recognize a weighted, check, you know, this is the first order condition of a weighted quantum regression problem. I think there would be a very simple way if I knew what is the posterior distribution. There would be a simple way to estimate this theta parameter. I could simply draw many draws from the posterior distribution and then regress y on x on the draws. For each individual, I draw many, many values. I regress y on x and the draws. Then if the number of draws increases, I get a consistent estimate. Okay? Just because this equation holds here. Same thing for the delta here. Of course, remember, we don't know what is posterior distribution. So the algorithm, what it will be doing is it will be alternating between drawing from the posterior distribution, then running two quantum regressions to recover these parameters and these parameters. Once we have the quantum regressions, we will reconstruct the posterior distribution based on the approximating model. Then we will redraw from that posterior distribution and go back and forth between these two steps. And this is exactly this algorithm here that alternates between draws from posterior distribution and estimation of, these are simple quantum regression, actually. So this preserves the nice feature, computation feature of quantum regression in each estimation step. Of course, it's much more complicated computationally than quantum regression. In our experience, on simulated and real data, this works surprisingly well as an algorithm. Okay, that's really an algorithm that seems to give us meaningful numbers and not, you know, it doesn't seem to be very sensitive to initial conditions. So there seems to be, although it's very difficult to get very formal numerical results here. It's an algorithm that seems to be very encouraging here. So I'm not going to discuss precise implementation. About asymptotics, maybe I want to, just to emphasize what we haven't done and what is very hard here. What is very hard is to do inference. What we have done is to provide a proof of consistency as the sample size and the number of not tend to infinity, both things. Remember, the number of pieces in the interval, the approximating model. We need, but at the same time, we need to do inference where n and the number of pieces go to infinity together. And this is hard. And the reason is, was mentioned by Yushy in his talk. The fact that in these nonlinear panel data models, these are very complex models that feature ill-posed inverse problems. A special case of this model is the standard, you know, non-parametric convolution problem with repeated measurements. It's well-known to show, in worst cases, rates of convergence that can be log n. So we know, we know this is very, you know, very hard, very challenging problem. And doing the asymptotics here is not still done. So it's still an open question to us. So rates of convergence, of course, a question. Another question is how to do feasible inference? In this case, could we self-normalize somehow the estimator by its variance and get, you know, standard asymptotic distribution? I mean, these are open questions right now. So this, this is a slide. So this was basically this very simple model, you know, static quantum regression augmented by a quantum regression for eta given x. We have extensions, so we could put several etas. We could have dynamics. We could have also We could have also non-strictly exogenous regressors. Everything that I have talked about would apply. The algorithm could be modified to add this. If we had predetermined regressors, we need to add extra quantile regression steps that have to do with the feedback process. So we need this extra model and that would complete. And of course, the expression of the posterior distribution can be much more complicated in these models. And the actual computational cost can be also much more complicated. A few numbers and then I'm done. So we have started to work on an application. So this is an application that looks at the effect of smoking during pregnancy on the birth weight of the child. That's very important application from an health economics point of view, from policy perspective also. And actually, from an economic perspective, it's also quite interesting because it is an application where heterogeneity has been shown to be quite meaningful and important. And for example, we have used this application in a previous paper with Manuel in a linear model, but with heterogeneity. Now, nonlinearities and distributional effects have also been documented in the literature. This is one of the main examples used by Koecker throughout his different work as an application of quantile regression. So it's useful to try to put things together of heterogeneity and non-linearity distributions within the same model. And for this, so we use data of Abreu-Vayya. The reason why this is a panel is that because for each mother, we have several children. Okay? So the time periods are here as the number of the different children. And actually, we have, we take a simple sample of 10,000 women and three children. The outcome will be the log birth weight. The covariates is this 0-1 smoking indicator. Did you smoke or didn't you smoke during pregnancy? And for the moment, we control just for the age of the mother and the gender of the child. So this is interesting. This is just simple, you know, OLS gives you 10% reduction in birth weight if you smoke, which, you know, is very detrimental, actually. That's very detrimental for the health of the child later on that has been documented in the literature. But now, part of this, of course, is spurious. It's due to the fact that smokers are not a random sample of the population of women. And one way to try to correct for that is to control for mother-specific fixed effects. And if you do that in the naive way, for example, you assume strict exuality of smoking, which is a big assumption, of course. We need to stick to that assumption, but that's a big assumption. But if you do that, the fixed effect estimator estimate is still significantly negative, but it's half what it was in OLS. So now let's try to have a distributional view to look at effects at different quantiles. We can do that by using standard quantile regression, which would be the solid line here. This is a standard quantile regression that I plot here, that's the quantile regression estimate for different percentile tau. And you see that this estimate is always negative. At the median, it's more or less this minus point 10. But we see also that it is quite strikingly increasing throughout the distribution. Now, this increase could be completely spurious, could be just due to the fact that we have heterogeneity. We want to account for the presence of heterogeneity in this quantile regression. And that's what we do in the dashed line when we estimate the model. So here, it was with an approximating model with 20 knots. We've tried other values, et cetera. It seems to be pretty robust, actually. We still have a number of checks to do. But we see that the result is quite consistent with the comparison between fixed effects and OLS. But basically, the effect is still negative, but it is quite smaller than what it was originally when not controlling for heterogeneity of the mother. Moreover, what is nice also is that the increase throughout the distribution is still preserved using this specification. Of course, now we want to try other specifications where heterogeneity, for example, enters in a different way into the model. So this is basically what I had to say about these quantile models for unobserved heterogeneity. Just wanted to say one last thing that is coming back to the first part of the talk. I have spent quite a lot of time going through the details for the quantile regression model, the specific model. But in the first part of the talk, I claimed that the approach was quite general. Just want to give you a hint about that. Suppose we are interested in a panel data model where the equation of interest is not a quantile regression. The equation of interest here, for example, is a likelihood model that depends on some parameters alpha. Let's say some structural parameters or some parameters that the economists can attach very clear interpretation to these parameters. Well, what we could do is to expand this model, complete the model by assuming a distribution for eta given x that follows a quantile regression specification. So we get an implied likelihood here of eta given x that depends on the delta of tau function. And then we get a semi-parametric specification where this specification, we argue, uses quantile regression, so it's rather flexible. It's a correlated random effect specification. How can we do estimation in this context? We can use very similar algorithm than the one that I presented. The big difference will be that instead of doing quantile regressions in the estimation step given the draws of eta, you will do a quantile regression for eta given x and a maximum likelihood estimation of y given x and the draws of eta. But essentially, there will be very little difference to what we do when we have the quantile-quantile model. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. So, two excellent papers covering a huge amount of material. Main theme, the theme of the session was unobserved heterogeneity, especially in nonlinear models. And one key aspect of the theme is the dimension of the unobserved heterogeneity is larger than the dimension of the data. So that's what, you know, you could just have a one-dimensional heterogeneity, one-dimensional outcome, and maybe then the problem is less interesting. But here, you have high-dimensional heterogeneity, but it enters the model in a structured way. For example, first model here, H1, you have two-dimensional heterogeneity, alpha and beta, but it enters the model through this additive index. You could have data on y and x and instead of, replace model 1 by model 2 where you have less structure on H, but you have a scalar heterogeneity. And both these papers, I think, are focusing more on type models of type 1. So why not use the simpler model, model 2, which has one less dimension of heterogeneity? Well, the model with more variables adds some structure. Hopefully, this is based on prior information and not just physical convenience. And the structure, it helps with precision in terms of estimating the joint density of y and x. And it also possibly adds some interpretation. So if you have a high-dimensional estimation problem, adding this, allowing for high-dimensional unobserved heterogeneity with structure can be very helpful. There's a lot of intuition for identification in these two papers. Adding structures such as index restrictions, additive separability, statistical independence restrictions, exclusion restrictions, and support restrictions. All of these have power to shrink the set of parameters that's consistent with the data. In addition, multiple measurements are useful. So Stephane's paper, multiple measurements on the outcome through the panel data process enables you to identify, to restrict the identified set. Support of data can be very important. In the linear random coefficients model, y equals alpha plus beta x. If you want to estimate the joint density of alpha and beta, you need x to have a full support. In many cases, if you don't have these restrictions of these first three types, partial identification results, that's a fact, you need to deal with it. In many cases, if you have a continuous mixing model, ill-posedness arises. Again, that's a fact, and you have to deal with it. I have a couple of things to say about computation and testing. So one thing about these mixture models, in many cases, they impose testable restrictions on the data. And so the two papers today didn't talk about that, but in some cases, you can test those restrictions. Couple of questions. So, I mean, these papers were both, were focusing on statistical methods. And they didn't talk as much about the economic models that justify the restrictions that they're using. So one key question I have, are the restrictions, are these quantile restrictions, are they plausible or reasonable? In what economic models are they plausible or reasonable? Can they be justified based on prior information or information garnered from outside the data you're looking at? The other thing about the two papers, they both said the goal of this analysis is to estimate this density, or this density, or this function. It's not always obvious that you need to estimate the density of random coefficients in a random coefficients model. In that model I presented on the first slide, you might want to estimate H1 and the density of alpha, beta. You might want to estimate H2 and the density of epsilon. But for many questions, you don't need those two objects. What you really want to know is, can I get an efficient estimate of the joint density of y and x? And if the random coefficient structure is valid, imposing that structure can result in a more precise estimate of the density. Or you might want to forecast y if you're trying to do some forecasting. And if you're thinking of this as an empirical industrial organization problem, if you have random coefficients in a demand model, you don't care about the distribution of random coefficients. What you care about is the elasticity of demand. So you might want to know a functional of these unknown densities. The answer to what is the goal of the analysis can depend in part on what is the economic model, what is the economic question you're trying to answer. Okay. Some comments about Kitamura. He looked at these types of mixture models and talked about some questions that might arise, specification questions. The talk and the slides didn't really provide much guidance on answers to these questions. So I guess one question I have is, is there some guidance for answering these questions? Presents four cases showing how various types of restrictions affect identification, affect the region that's identified. In many cases, very strong restrictions are required for point identification. But even when the set is not a singleton, there can be very useful restrictions that generate a non-trivial set. In general, if you don't impose some structure on the mixing distribution or on the function you're trying to estimate, in general, in these mixture models, you're going to be in a world where the identified set is not a singleton. Importantly, assumptions on behavior of the tails of distributions can shrink the identified set. So Yuichi talked about that. And adding restrictions. And then the four types, the four cases he discusses show how adding restrictions either on the mixing distribution or on the component densities can narrow or shrink the identified set. He talked also about the repeated observations with independence, and that's also what Stephane's paper is about, can narrow the identified set. Okay. So some of the value of this paper is you write down this type, this mixture model, what is possible to learn about the parameters of this model from the data? So that's what this identification analysis tells you. By going through that analysis, you also get an idea of, you know, what is the intuition for why things are identified or not? How important is, are support conditions, what type of variation matters? As Yuichi showed, this analysis identification oftentimes can lead to a method for estimation inference. And something he didn't emphasize is you write down a model, you analyze the identification, you realize that the identified set is very big or your estimates are not as precise as you might want. Well, analyzing identification can then point directions that might shrink the identified set. And these lead to questions about experimental design. So you have some data, you have a model. How can you get better data? You can design an experiment which generates better data. You can get survey collectors to collect better data or you can use panel data. So those are, these are some things. You write down a model and the identified set is very large. Given the data, that says, given the data that's available, nothing more can be done. What more can be done is to get better data through some, through designing experiments that are designed to, you know, comparing the cost of data collection experimentation with the benefit of reducing the identified set. I talked about this previously. It's not always, Yuichi focuses on estimating these objects, but it's not always obvious that you necessarily need to know what those objects are. What you care about is perhaps some functional of those objects. The answer to the question of what is the thing that you should focus on is going to depend on the economic question. So one thing that's very important is, is this, the density of the random coefficients, is it going to be unchanged if the government policy changes that you're evaluating? Is it going to be unchanged if the economy changes? Or is it unchanged in the short run? I mean, there's different ways of saying, is it exogenous? What's exogenous and what's not exogenous? So a question that kept coming to my mind was, should a researcher assume that this random coefficients have finite support or that they have a continuous distribution? So what are the benefits of these two alternatives? How does it affect the analysis? I don't know the answer to this question. This is just a question I have. How does it affect the analysis? And how do you choose between the two extremes? Okay, some other comments. So here's just about testability. If you have a linear random coefficients model, you have data on y and x. You want to estimate the density of alpha, beta. Well, this linear random coefficients model imposes restrictions on this joint density of y and x because you can estimate that top model. And then you can also estimate a completely unrestricted density of y conditional on x and then compare them statistically. Yuichi talked about the dimension of alpha. So one thing about nonlinear models is that the mixing distribution of alpha may be identified even when alpha is high-dimensional. And here's just an example. Suppose the component density, y conditional on x and alpha is known, is parametric, and has this infinite series, has this infinite series representation. If it turns out, listen, if it turns out the eigenvalues are all bounded away from 0, then even if, it doesn't matter what the dimension of alpha is here, this operator is invertible and you can estimate the density g of alpha regardless of the, assuming the dimension of alpha is finite. And that's purely a function of these eigenvalues being strictly positive. Now proving, if you don't know what this kernel, this operator is, proving that it's invertible is a different matter. It's a very different matter. Okay. Here's perhaps an application. Suppose, suppose you have a dynamic consumption model. Model 1 is consumers choose how much to consume based on their assets, income, and interest rates based on some risk, heterogeneity risk revision parameter and measurement error. We want to estimate the distribution of gamma. But suppose we think that fraction lambda, the population, are rational and follow this dynamic consumption model. Fraction 1 minus lambda are quote irrational and perhaps have some rule of thumb consumption function. Well, if this model is correctly specified, the distribution of consumption conditional on the covariates has this form. It's a linear combination of the rational model and the irrational model. And so this is a mixing model. And so I have proved here that the operators here are invertible. But if you want to estimate lambda, phi, the distribution of gamma and the distribution of beta, why might you want to do that? To simulate the impact of various policies. It's very, after writing down that model, you can then compute the eigenvalues of the operator, check whether the operator is invertible. If it is, then you can estimate these densities. If it's not invertible, you can characterize the null set of the operator and then specify that the set of densities is equal to one particular component plus elements in that null set. Okay. Okay, so let's skip. Sorry. Okay, so this is an important extension of results from the quantile regression estimators with random effects. Proves identification, shows consistency, the semi-parametric and asymptotic properties of the parametric version, and a very useful iterative method for computing the estimator. Again, there wasn't much in the paper on economics. I'm just, but there was a little bit. I want to talk a little bit about computation.
I want to talk a little bit about computation. I'm not going to talk about testability. So computation, this was, let's see, this is the minimization problem that is being solved in the paper, or the fixed point problem. Find xi and theta and delta such that xi equals theta delta, and theta delta minimize this, these quantile operators. Two points about computation. One, in the paper, they describe computing the integral here by using a Metropolis-Hastings algorithm. But the integral here is a one-dimensional integral, so it's not a constraining factor in their application. So using that method is fine, but perhaps in other applications. And a better alternative would be to use perhaps a Gaussian quadrature method, Trapp's rule method, or Simpson's rule method, something like that. Okay, second, they outline an iterative procedure to seek a fixed point. Perhaps an alternative way to find a fixed point is to solve this mathematical program with equilibrium constraints specifying the top is the objective function, g1 and g2. So minimize that subject to the constraints that this f, this density, is equal to the posterior density that Stefan was talking about, and subject to the constraint that cA equals theta and cb equals delta. And this method will also find a fixed point if one can be found. And perhaps, again, in the applications in the paper, this computation didn't seem to be a constraining factor, but perhaps in more complicated versions, an extension something like this might be useful. Alternative way is to solve the maximum likelihood version of the model, again, using an MPEC approach. Here's the likelihood function. Their paper imposes density independence restrictions, I'm sorry, conditional independence restrictions, quantile restrictions, and regulations. How do you do that using constrained maximum likelihood? You maximize the likelihood function. Here's some constraints on the independence restrictions. Running out of time. These are the quantile restrictions, which can be just maximize likelihood function subject to these restrictions. And that's all. And here's an application. Well, so the methods in the paper can be very valuable in a lot of contexts Stefan was talking about. So in particular context, if you're studying hedonic prices for housing, oftentimes, some characteristics of quality of the house are not observed. So if eta is the unobserved fixed quality of the house, x are some observed quality characteristics of the house, like location size, house type, age, or structure. And we want to estimate a hedonic price function, then, subject, then the methods in this paper apply quite readily. Other applications, wages, demand for differentiated products with unobserved product quality. In that case, eta would be the unobserved product quality. Okay.
Thank you very much, Lars. I should point out, for those who are interested in the particular talks, that the slides that central will be put on the Jervis site quite shortly. But before I invite Stefan and Yuichi maybe to respond to Lars's comments, maybe I could add a little bit of that, for their contributions. Yuichi, would you want to spark firstly?
Sure. Okay. So thank you very much for a very comprehensive discussion. And most of the points, I really agree with the issues you are making. And indeed, so absolutely, there are, so I tend to go after really the identification of every single component of the model, and sometimes you don't need it. On the other hand, well, let's say, one trivial example, let's say, taking the random coefficient, sorry, random coefficient binary choice model. For example, if I want to figure out something like, so it's a binary choice, conditional on the population who chose one choice, and I change x's, what proportion would switch into the other, something like that, we still have to kind of go after the identification of the whole joint distribution. And also, the other point Lars is making, that lots of the parameters, eventually, I want to go after would be a functionals of the, say, densities I estimated. And so that's kind of things which I want to do, you know, after figuring out all these things, what would be the good way of, and asymptotics for the functionals. So that's a very, very important program, which should be done. In terms of a choice of the specification, I don't think I can provide a very convincing answer. Typically, in many cases, people choose, well, so that nice thing about finite mixture is that really the unobserved heterogeneity can be really, really infinite dimensional because you're just switching between, you know, types. So it really allows you to deal with a very flexible heterogeneity. So of course, there's a price you pay for that. So it really kind of depends, is my answer. So finally, I think, so in terms of, so that's this very important point of, so what, after all these identification analysis, what kind of a thing you want to say about, say, data collection, which is very important? And taking the last stuff I talked about, the joint with Stoy, so we have this whole extremely partially identified setup. And in that case, the bounds we are going to get really, really depends on what kind of a data points you can get. And so there's a very interesting mapping between the support of the data and what kind of the bounds, or how to shrink the bounds, which is a little bit what Blundell was doing, well, Blundell, Browning, Crawford. So they do a bit of that. And so again, our plan in that paper next is what kind of a design or data would be useful to get a really tight bounds, especially now we are interested in doing counterfactual in that setup. And so that's an extremely important point. So thank you again for all the discussion.
Yes, well, I don't have much to say. Thank you very much. That was, all the points are well taken. Just one very small remark about computation. So I mean, there are plenty of possibilities to compute in this case. What we like about this algorithm is that we do preserve the convexity of the objective function in each estimation step. It's not clear that with MPEC or minimization under constraints or likelihood under constraints, you will preserve this type of nice features of quantitative regression. But, you know, we don't have a sense of what is the clear winner because we haven't tried them. So we should, especially in these other applications that can be computationally quite demanding like IO, for example. But thanks anyway for these suggestions. We'll try them.
Yeah, thanks. I don't know if there's any comments or questions to add, whether I'd like to put to the speakers. Okay, so there's a reception occurring at 7:15 kind of outside here, whenever you want to, if you want to go on to that. But I think if you could join me once again, thank you to the speakers and discuss the very interesting comments.